Oh, okay. Thank you.
Brian is going to accept the environmental health proclamation.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. We'll call our meeting of the Board of County Commissioners here in Union County to order and begin our meeting with an invocation led by Commissioner Agnes. Pray with me if you will. Gracious Lord, we gather here tonight and we're thankful for all that you've done in our lives and in our country and our state and our county. We're thankful for the cooler weather that you've given us. Lord, we pray that common sense will prevail as we deliberate and that you will lead, guide, and direct all that we do and say here tonight in Jesus' precious name. Amen. We'll begin with some employee recognitions this evening, and first of those being an award for outstanding achievement in popular annual financial reporting. The Government Finance Officers Association of the U.S. and Canada has given an award for outstanding achievement in popular annual financial reporting to Union County for its popular annual financial report for the physical year ended June 30, 2019. The award for outstanding achievement in popular annual financial reporting is a prestigious national award recognizing conformance with the high standards for preparation of state and local government popular reports. In order to receive this award, a government must publish a popular annual financial report whose contents conform to the program's standards of creativity, presentation, understandability, and reader appeal. This award is valid for a period of one year only. Union County, North Carolina, has received this award recognition for the last five consecutive years. So at this time, I'll make that presentation. Do you have some comments?
I do. I'm a firm believer in giving credit where credit is due. On behalf of the finance staff today, I have invited Ms. Alex Whitaker to join us to actually receive this award on our behalf.
Alex, if you'll come up, please.
Alex was our project leader for the PAFER this past year. She had only been with the county for a few short weeks and was assigned this project and accepted the challenge head-on. She utilized all the resources she needed to complete this. Congratulations, Alex, on a job well done.
Next item is our recognition tenure with the county. And we have a number of employees here today, so I'll share that information. We have with public communications, five years, David Versaji. In general services, with five years, Jeffrey Caton. With human services, business ops, five years, Ginger Burgess and Tracy Moore. In the sheriff's office, five years, Jerry Barbie, Corey Howard, Tex Hupman, Michael Lambert. And with five years in social services, Tamika Bobbitt and Sandra Harkness. With 10 years service in the sheriff's office, Eric Mangum. Fifteen years in general services, Kelly Mantka. In 20 years in finance, Beverly Lyles, Jimmy Gillian in Public Works, and Bradford Mosley in the sheriff's office with 20 years. With 25 years from the sheriff's office, Jerry Paxton. And we have two retirements in finance with 24 years, Deborah Cox, and with the sheriff's office, A.J. Monero with 13 years. So we thank them for their service to the citizens of Union County. Our next item is proclamation recognizing Red Ribbon Week. Red Ribbon Week is an alcohol, tobacco, and other drug and violence prevention awareness campaign observed annually in October in the United States. It began as a tribute to fallen DEA Special Agent Enrique Camarena in 1985. According to the U.S. United States DEA, Red Ribbon Week is the nation's largest and longest-running drug awareness and prevention program. And I will share that with you. Proclamation by the Union County Board of Commissioners, whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in this nation has reached epidemic stages, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs, and whereas the National Family Partnership is sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, no use of illegal drugs, no illegal use of legal drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23 through 31, and whereas business, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign, and whereas Union County further commits its resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign, now therefore be it resolved that the Union County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim October 23 through the 31st, 2020, as Red Ribbon Week, and encourages Union County citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free state. We have one other item for the board, a proclamation by the Union County Board of Commissioners proclaiming the week of September 20 through the 26th, 2020, as Registered Environmental Health Specialist Week. So I'll share that information at this time. It says, whereas registered environmental health specialists in North Carolina have contributed immeasurably to the public's health and safety and to the improved quality of life in our communities, and whereas registered environmental health specialists conduct important work in programs focusing on food safety, facility sanitation, wastewater disposal, safe drinking water, lead poisoning prevention, infectious agents, and emergency preparedness and response, and whereas registered health, environmental health specialists are employed by local, state, and federal governments, schools, and industries throughout North Carolina, and whereas registered environmental health specialists across North Carolina are assisting their communities with the response to the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas World Environmental Health Day is celebrated annually September 26th, the theme of this year's observance, environmental health, a key public health intervention in disease/pandemic prevention, highlights the importance of registered environmental health specialists in the prevention and investigation of infectious disease outbreaks, and whereas the Union County Board of Commissioners commends registered environmental health specialists for their many contributions to improving the quality of life for people, families, and communities throughout the state, now therefore the Union County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim September 20 through the 26th, 2020, as Registered Environmental Health Specialist Week in Union County and commends its observance to all citizens. Brian, I believe you're going to accept this?
Yes, sir, I am. That's on behalf of Tracy Colley. She is out in the field today. Tracy wished you could be here, but unfortunately, the job called her away.
In order to make those two proclamations as a part of the record, can I get a motion to add those? All in favor, say aye. Thank you very much. I'm going to ask. All aboard to join me if they will down front. One of the opportunities you have as chairman is you get passed out awards, but it just so happens we have an award this evening for Ms. Lynn West. Thirty years. Celebrate 30 years of Union County, and believe it or not, every member of the board has served as chairman during some time and worked with Lynn on a close place. So Lynn, if you will come forward. Put you in the middle there. Congratulations. The board would want you to make certain. You don't think I'll need those, do you? Next item on our agenda is informal comments. I have the signal. We don't have any, so we'll move to our additions, deletions, and adoption of the agenda. Motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Next item is consent. Motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Thank you. Takes us to old business. And we have no old business, so that'll take us to item 21 under new business, Avearo Presentation on Staffing and Infrastructure Assessment.
Thank you, Chairman Simpson, board members. This afternoon, you're going to hear a brief presentation from Avearo Advisors. Avearo Advisors is a technology advisory firm out of Maryville, Tennessee. They have extensive experience with local government clients and were selected as our consultants through an RFP process to assist in a review of our information technology department. Specifically, Avearo was tasked with conducting an information technology, infrastructure, and staffing analysis, which included the following objectives: A review of the current state of technologies, IT staffing, resources, and service delivery model; an understanding of the culture, vision, and mission of our organization; comparing IT best practices and trends with the ones currently utilized in Union County; identifying issues, gaps, and risks associated with the current technology and service delivery covering all applications and systems; as well as providing actionable recommendations and an implementation plan to realize cost savings as well as service improvements aligned with the county's vision and mission. The deliverables from this effort culminated in a long-range IT strategic plan and roadmap. This strategic plan and roadmap provide actionable strategies that are listed as either urgent, immediate, short-term, and long-term for the next three to five years. This afternoon, we have Andrew Hayes and Abhijit, see, I knew I was going to mess that up, AV, because I'm in a very car, I knew it, AV with Avearo Advisors, and Andrew will provide an overview of the first piece of their work. The priorities that we selected as an organization for our initial phase are the restructuring of our IT department and the documentation of IT policies and procedures. Andrew will provide the recommended structure of our IT organization. I do want to point out to the board that we aren't moving from where we are today to the ultimate state that you'll see in Andrew's presentation. We currently have 11 IT positions, and the ideal state that is recommended is 25 IT positions. Your consent agenda that was just approved included four new positions for our pay plan that we were able to accommodate in our current budget by repurposing IT funds to meet the current needs. We will have additional positions that would come to the board for approval in future budget years. I have met with our IT staff over the last week, and they are fully updated on our plans. And at this time, I will ask Andrew to come up and let you know that we're very pleased with this engagement and look forward to the work that we're doing with Avearo.
All right. Andrew? All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Mr. County Manager, members of the board. I'm going to go ahead and get plugged in here. All right. Can everybody see that? Very good. Okay. As Michelle mentioned, I am Andrew Hayes and with Avearo Advisors. We're an IT modernization firm from Maryville, Tennessee. For our presentation this afternoon, I've prepared a brief agenda. First, I'll give you a quick introduction on Avearo that builds on what Michelle said. I'm going to talk about the IT assessment project, which we completed during the spring. I will discuss the restructuring IT department initiative that has followed, along with the Develop IT policy initiative that's moving forward as well, and then we'll wrap up with any questions. Thank you. Okay. This is our team that was on the project, AV, myself, our PMs Ross DeFaul and Tyler Galant, and our technical team, Mike Caffrey and Robert Kornovich. Again, Avearo Advisors, we work exclusively with public sector clients. AV and myself have been doing this work for the last 15 years, and today is actually the four-year anniversary of the inception of Avearo Advisors. So it's with great pleasure that we present to the board today. We are based in eastern Tennessee. This is a representation of our client footprint. You know, we like to say that we're large enough to serve you, but we're small enough to know you, and we work with clients across the country. And we recently landed our first international client as well. Our initial engagement with the county, the IT assessment, you know, our methodology, the way that we approached this was very interactive. We looked at people, process, and technology, and we conducted in-person discovery sessions with stakeholders from across the organization to basically get a snapshot, and we say good, bad, or ugly of the current state. We then met with stakeholders again to do some future state visioning and looking at how we can optimize how the county uses technology and apply our best practice lens to identify what the gaps were. And, you know, when we completed our gap analysis in the current state assessment, we noted gaps in the IT infrastructure, the way that our folks are utilizing enterprise software, the IT service delivery model, and staffing, which included looking at the organizational structure. And from there, as Michelle mentioned, we developed an IT strategic roadmap and subsequently a strategic action plan. In terms of some of the findings that I can report to the board, some of the strengths that we noted, we've got a lot of talent here. There's a lot of passion, and the stakeholders really, really dug into this and made this their project. We noted proficient utilization of our document imaging software. Our public safety has state-of-the-art equipment and software, and we noticed a real dedication for folks to serve. In terms of some of the opportunities for improvement, we noticed a lack of a strategic vision for IT, a very siloed approach to technology at the department level in terms of, you know, how they're approaching procurement. Sometimes we found that, you know, there are systems that are also being underutilized as well. Within IT, we noticed loosely followed IT policies and procedures, some antiquated hardware and software, and we noticed it, an overall lack of process-related documentation. These next few slides show you samples of some of the deliverables that appear in the comprehensive strategic plan. This is a very detailed SWOT analysis, looking at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. This was our IT assessment roadmap, and as you'll see, it looks at how we can use technology and go through the process of IT modernization over the next five calendar years. You'll see that we've got some strategies that are urgent. You know, right when we were wrapping up the study was when the pandemic hit. So there were some things that we said, okay, you know, now we're looking at the need for a lot of folks to have to work from home, and, you know, there's only a couple that are going to be deemed here essential to work on-site. So what can we do to really ramp up and get the county ready for teleworking? So that comprised the urgent strategies, and then we had the immediate ones for year one, the short-term for years two and three, and then the more long-term strategies. This right here is a sample of the strategic plan as well. I wanted to kind of walk the board through how the deliverable functions. So what we did is we had our current state and then our optimized future state, and we looked at what are the gaps. And then to alleviate those gaps, we developed strategies. So at the top, you will see the strategy below with the gaps that we identified that it will address. For each strategy, we put together a strategic action plan for implementation. So those are the action steps. We identified if there were any prerequisites that were required, what stakeholder groups were going to be impacted through the implementation of the strategy, any required resources, any associated costs, and then we put together, based on best practices that we've seen where these types of strategies have been implemented, what we felt would be the bottom-line impact for the county. As Michelle mentioned, we're now moving forward with the implementation of the strategies, and the very first strategy that we were moving on is the development of, you know, a new IT organization. So we're restructuring it. The scope of that engagement was to define, you know, what the roles and responsibilities in this new structure, what it's going to look like, develop comprehensive job descriptions. One thing that came out of our study was folks weren't really sure how to engage with the IT department. So, you know, they weren't really sure what are the services that are offered and how can IT help me? So what we then did was we developed a comprehensive catalog of IT services, and then, you know, we're in the process of finalizing the organizational structure. So what I wanted to do today for the board was I wanted to preview that and then walk through, you know, what the different divisions are. So the one thing that we noted in the current state was with the way that the IT organization was set up, there wasn't a whole lot of accountability. There was a very undefined reporting structure, and the proposed, the new organizational structure, we feel will resolve those gaps. And we'll go ahead and start at the management level. Okay. The functions for IT department management. Previously, we noted that the CIO was really focused on operations, which has led to almost a reactive approach, not really a strategic vision, a focus on what is coming next. So what we're proposing is that we have a CIO, a director, who is the visionary, who thinks, you know, who's constantly looking at where we are today, making note of best practices, and thinking strategically with, you know, how can our teams use technology to better meet the needs of our citizens? How can we better communicate across the organization? So that's our focus for the CIO and the director going forward, and we have proposed the creation of an assistant director who will actually have multiple divisions reporting to him. Those divisions would actually be security, network operations, applications, database, and there will end up being a project manager that reports into the CIO and to the assistant director. All right. So getting into those divisions that I just talked about, our security division, we already have an information system security officer, but he will actually be getting some help now. As we gradually migrate from on-premise enterprise systems, you know, of today to systems that are in the cloud for tomorrow, we've recommended the creation of a cloud architect who will start to get us ready in the future for that, along with an information system security analyst who will back up the ISSO in protecting the infrastructure and the network and preventing data breaches and things of that nature. The next division is our Network and Operations Division, which handles operating the infrastructure and the network, you know, and along with managing day-to-day operations of the help desk. So we already have a networking manager, and now this individual will have some support. There's actually three new positions, the Network and Telecommunication Specialist, which has a telecom focus, the Network Technician that focuses on our network itself, and then a Help Desk Supervisor, who will also have some senior system support as well to govern our help desk. And the one thing that we want to say about that is it's great to have a help desk, but if we don't have a governed process, it's not going to really help us to help them. Because one thing that we found is some folks are entering tickets, but other folks are just picking up the phone. And there's not a whole lot of prioritization of handling tickets, so it's a matter of setting up a process, governing it, and then getting out there and enforcing it and training our people, you know, how we actually can help them. And again, as I mentioned, with the IT service catalog that our team has been working with IT to create, now folks are going to have a better understanding of what the actual services are. The next division is our Applications Division, and this is actually going to be, there's a couple new positions, the Applications Manager, and then that person's Support Staff. They will have the GIS Manager and the GIS Team reporting in. But on the application side, it's going to be more of managing and supporting the county's enterprise software systems. And specifically, the Information Systems Coordinator that reports into the Applications Administrator will be handling applications-related help desk tickets that come into our help desk. And this specific division is very critical because, again, as we start to lean more on vendors when we move to cloud computing, this person, this division will be, you know, kind of the custodian of the documentation for those systems. They will be managing those vendor relationships. As updates come out, they will be training our folks on, you know, if you have an update that comes out next Friday, it's a matter of getting people ready and showing them. that comes out next Friday, it's a matter of getting people ready and showing them what those changes mean. Because, you know, in my years of doing this, when people say that technology's not working, it's one of a couple reasons. It's, we don't have the right infrastructure, we don't have our business processes aligned with the functionality, or our people just don't know how to use it. And then they lose confidence, and then they start getting Excel out and doing workarounds. This division is going to resolve that. And ultimately, you know, if we're making all these investments in our technology, we want to make sure that we're really harnessing the capacity that it has so that our folks are getting the return, you know, in terms of what this can do. And again, it enables us to better serve the citizens of our community. So we also have the database administration division. As you'll recall, the database administrator, that was a position that was approved last year or earlier this year. So it's just a matter of continuing to manage our databases and our data and, you know, understanding how to restore our systems if we have any challenges. And then we also have our electronic content management team reporting under there as well. And again, the one thing that I want to say specifically about Laserfish, which is one of our electronic content management systems, we found that to be a major strength here at the county. You know, we continue to build out how we're using Laserfish as a document management system to get rid of all the hard copy paper that we're using. And then the last is a new division as well, and this is a new position that's been proposed, a project manager. And this project manager will port directly into our CIO, but will also be working with our assistant director and will aid county departments in matters related to IT procurement. Ultimately, you know, if you find that this department over here has an opportunity to move forward on bringing a new system in, this IT project manager would work with the department director to understand from a cost standpoint what it is, you know, what our return on investment is going to be, and ultimately to put together the business case that the board would evaluate before we went through the procurement process. And would also assist with the evaluation of vendors and ultimately implementing that software. And you'll see that there's an administrative assistant that reports under the project manager, and that admin would help provide services to the project manager, but would also provide administrative assistant services to both the CIO and the assistant director. So that, again, there's our proposed organizational chart. The second half of the second, or of the first follow-on strategy that we're implementing is developing IT policy and procedures. And as I mentioned in our strengths and weaknesses, one of the opportunities that we found was to develop some IT policies. Yes, we have some loosely-based policies, but there's really not a whole lot there. So what we recommended is let's just start from scratch. So the scope of that project, which we're actually getting ready to kick off here in a week or so, under the direction of our assistant director, is developing the template for the policy and procedure manual, specifying the IT usage standards so that folks in our end-user community understands how they're supposed to be using their devices and their systems, going out to each of our departments and developing service-level agreements so that they understand, we as IT, these are the services that we provide to you as the department, and we can start to develop some timeframes and, you know, an actual project management lifecycle for what some of those services look like. And then we're going to formalize the policies and procedures and develop a manual that we can then push out to our employees. So that concludes my presentation from Averro Advisors. Are there any questions from the board?
Mr. Hales? How do you quantify your best practices? I mean, tell me what makes it the best practices?
We've been doing this work for a long time. We have had the opportunity to work with organizations of all sizes and scales across the country. So in addition to our institutional knowledge of things that we've seen working, in addition our technical team, Mike Caffrey, who's our IT lead, was recently named as one of the top 50 IT leaders in the country. So we do a lot of research. You know, we benchmark on a lot of work that we've done.
But, I mean, what quantifies it? Efficiency, savings to the unit, you know, best practices? I mean, you can have practices, but they don't effectively net you something, and that's what I'm asking. I want to know, you know, does it save us money? Or does it, you know?
Absolutely. All of the recommendations that are in our strategic plan, some of them will result in cost savings. Some of the recommendations will make it easier for us to provide services to the community. Some will make it easier for us to work in our teams across the county.
And one other question I have, I notice you've got a lot of new managers. What's your man and management ratio and the effectiveness there? Can you expand on that, please?
So yes, we do, there's actually one, two. We have two new managers that we have, that we've recommended. That would be the applications manager and the project manager.
What about the CIO and the assistant director?
So yes, the CIO, obviously, we already have an IT director, a CIO. The assistant director would be a new executive manager in that department. And we have, let's see here, the size of the new IT organization would actually be staff of 25. And you have two people directly reporting into the CIO and then into your assistant director. You've got four to five managers with staff then reporting into those managers.
I just wanted to make a couple of final remarks, too, and we can still answer questions. I do want to stress, we have a small IT staff currently, and actually, I think staffed, we have about nine people with 11 positions. And one of the first things when Mark became the manager that he tasked me with was looking at our IT structure long-term and strategically. And so what you really see here is us trying to put some bandwidth and some structure to an organization that really matches the sophistication and the breadth of the businesses that we manage. And so, again, I want to stress that you're not going to see us, we're not going to ask for all of these positions in the next budget year, I can assure you of that. We're going to continue to assess and make sure that this really is the right model. But the four that we think are important are the ones that we're adding currently with existing resources, and I think you'll be pleased with what we're putting in place as a model. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item is item 22, North Star Research and Strategy Presentation on Union County Branding Initiative.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm pleased to introduce to you our branding partners with North Star Place Branding and Marketing. As you recall, each of you had the opportunity to talk with them during their visit in August. Today, you're going to have an opportunity for them to share the results of their research and the strategic statement that helps put some parameters and define how people view Union County. It will be used as an inspiration moving forward with the creative phase of the branding initiative. This research is honest, and in some cases, may cause you to pause. That said, they've done a great job listening to our employees, our residents, business leaders, as well as individuals outside of Union County to bring us this honest and full view of how Union County is perceived. It's going to speak to the wonderful characteristics we know and love about our county as well as reveal opportunities. This is a project we have needed for a long time, and I'm pleased with the direction that we're headed in. They have captured who we are. And with us today in person, we have Patrick Golden with North Star, who's the creative director. And joining us virtually to present the data is Ed Barlow. You see him on the screen there, Director of Strategic Planning for North Star. And following the presentation, there'll be an opportunity for you to ask questions. A couple of key points I want to reiterate before they start. North Star has listened. That's one thing I want you to hear clearly. The results of the research is the information that they have gathered from listening. If one thing we've learned is they are good listeners. These are not cookie cutter consultant words that you'll be seeing today in work. There's been great engagement in this process. More than 100 one-on-one interviews have been conducted, and more than 100 people signed up to receive updates on this project as we go forward. And we had over 500 participants in a community survey. We believe that they have captured who we are in terms of a description, and we are all in agreement with the strategic statement that you will be receiving at the end of the presentation to move forward with the creative phase of this initiative. And with that, I'll turn it over to Patrick.
Thank you so much. Pleasure being here today. I want to thank you so much. It's been a pleasure to get to explore Union County and get to know it a little bit better. We've learned a lot in our past two months of interviews and one-on-ones and surveys. And joining me remotely today is Ed Barlow. He's going to take us through everything we've learned. And as we said, we'll end with a strategic statement at the end, and any questions that you have, we'll be happy to answer. So thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. Thanks, Mark. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to share this data with you and give you an update on the process. So I'll get to, give me half a second to get to the presentation. There we go. You should see a title screen on your screen. So we're excited to share these results with you. North Star is a community branding firm working with cities and counties nationwide. We say that your brand is what people say about you when you're not around, and branding is what you do about it. So why that is important is because people make decisions on it based on that every day. And so as we started with the process, this is kind of like an hourglass symbol of our process. So we have several months of research that go in the top of that hourglass. All of the research, as Mark mentioned, within the community, but also from the outside looking in. So we'll go through quantitative data as well as qualitative. So what we're after is what is distinct and ownable for a place, and then how best to present and articulate that. So we're going to be at the neck of the hourglass at the end of this presentation. We're not sharing anything creative, no implementation recommendations. That's the next part of the process. Patrick and the creative team will get busy with the strategic DNA statement and then how to bring that to life creatively. But also, you see, as that hourglass widens, how that strategic DNA statement is meaningful and relevant for all parts of Union County and its audiences. So as Mark mentioned, you may see some things on the screen that you may disagree with. It is the information that was gathered, so there may be some surprises. Some people may have not gotten things right, they may have. And when we do get to the DNA statements, oftentimes it confirms some things. It may be a slightly different articulation than you may have expected, but oftentimes it's not a revelation. So we'll jump into all of this research. It has been condensed today for the timeframe for today's meeting. So a full complement of internal and external research, as you see here, quantitative and qualitative data. We will go through these as quickly as we can. The first piece I want to start with, you may be familiar with a net promoter score or an advocacy score. As part of that county-wide survey, and there were 500 respondents, those are people who live and/or work in Union County. We ask a very simple question. How likely are you to recommend living, visiting, or conducting business in Union County? So we're measuring advocacy. How likely are people to recommend this place for those three things? And so, and it's on a scale of one to 10. Nine or 10 are promoters, they're enthusiastic, they are helping your advocacy. Passives, kind of on the fence, probably satisfied, but not very vocal about it. And then from six to one are increasing detractors. So this net promoter score, or what we call the brand advocacy score, is those promoters minus detractors. We don't count the passives. So this is going to guide us to what level of advocacy, what sort of ambassadors do we have? Because you'll see through the research that we're really going to need them and need them to be informed to help tell that distinction or that story for Union County. So you can see here, the nine and 10, over on the right, our passives in yellow, and then our detractors. So as we get to that advocacy score, and I went the wrong way, sorry, we take promoters minus detractors. We have an advocacy score for living in Union County, almost 27%. And so we also keep a national average that we update regularly. And so we can compare those three questions to a national average. So you see the advocacy score, the 26.85 for living as visiting. We're below the national average for Union County advocacy as a place to visit, and then as a place to do business, well above the national average. Usually, in most communities that we work with, the conducting business score is often the lowest. So this will be important as we go through the research and as we get past that neck of the hourglass, and we want to bring that distinction to life, we'll want to engage as many ambassadors as we can and get more of them. So we're going to start with the research information from within Union County. So we'll start with qualitative data, all those different conversations that we had through the process, through the site visit, intercepts or man on the street. We had input through the outlet of Facebook. We have the branding site where people were able to add some comments. We helped focus groups in person as well as via Zoom and interviews by phone and in person there in Union County. A lot of information gathered. The most frequent ones are at the top, and these aren't the only things that were mentioned. These are the most mentioned. If it is in bold, a majority of folks, a large number, identified these descriptors and these assets. So the best descriptors are uncontrolled growth and safe, rural countryside, conservative, family-focused. So you can see some mostly positive descriptors identified for Union County. Now, as we get to the DNA statement, it's not just a laundry list of our advantages or assets, it's how those connect. But you can see a great list of assets and advantages identified through these conversations. The lower taxes and great schools mentioned by many, but also the talent pool, the bypass, the slower pace, higher education, your strength in agriculture and manufacturing, your proximity to Charlotte, the low cost of living and business, a great sense of community. Now, we're not going to build a brand around anything negative, but we can't put in a vacuum, so it's going to be helpful to understand what people are concerned about. And so with all these conversations, managing the growth, having a lot of commuters out and not having quite the job growth that they would like to have so they can work closer to home, some anti-growth attitudes, old ideas and an old boys' network identified by many divisions or differences or inequities between the East and West. And then you can see some additional things coming through several of those conversations. Now, on the right, we have what we think outsiders say, because we are going to measure that here in just a bit with those external conversations. But we think outsiders will say that- But we think outsiders will say that it's congested, there's nothing to do, I don't know where it is, they have good schools, it's a bedroom community. And then some other descriptors people expected to hear, rural, endless subdivisions, uninteresting, charming, blue collar, country folk, conservative. So a range of answers there. The course of these questions, we find out what people wish they had or think they need or want to have or have to leave the county for. Many pointing to an identity for Union County. Reasons to visit, so that's not quite a surprise, given the brand barometer score for visiting. They feel like there isn't enough to do, or they don't know what to recommend to their friends or family that may come. Job growth, having young professionals and the activities and the opportunities for them. Diversity, and the context of that word is ethnic and cultural diversity primarily. You can see some also mentions parks and trails and vision and unity and natural resources, experiences, and venues, and dining, and entertainment. Some identified sophistication, some said there's nothing missing. Opportunities identified in these conversations, industrial and commercial development, and many pointing to the need for that to assist the burden on the residential tax base. Most pointing to the bypass as a great opportunity. Downtown development is not just one location. That could be Waxahaw, Monroe, and others. You see the manufacturing and the aerospace, business-friendly attitude, white-collar jobs, some focus on economic development there, and then marketing and PR to tell about the great things, the airport, the talent pool, affordable land also. We wanted to know what people thought was most important to the identity of the place. Without blank, Union County isn't Union County. And so lower taxes, great schools, agriculture, manufacturing, so some similar things that we have seen, but a great list of advantages and identities there. Now, back with that brand barometer that we first covered, the 500 respondents, the community-wide survey throughout the county, response rate. This shows you the breakdown of what part of the county the respondents come from. And so we have full demographics that we can share, but there was a normal age bell curve for age. We had about 65% female, and so we have some demographic information available if that's needed. The descriptors that folks identified, they too, identifying uncontrolled growth, but family-friendly, disparate east and west, bedroom community to Charlotte, rural countryside, agriculture, conservative, and charming. The greatest assets, proximity to Charlotte, the lower taxes, the great schools, the quality of life. What a 500 who live and/or work think outsiders would say? They would call us a bedroom community. They'd say we're on the beach, or there's nothing to do, it's endless subdivisions and good schools. What distinguishes Union County from some surrounding areas in Charlotte and in the greater region? The small town and community feel, having access and ease to both rural and urban sensibilities and attributes. The rural and agricultural character of Union County, as well as the lower taxes and good schools we've already heard about. Greatest challenges, again, not what we're building a brand around, but important to know, managing growth, infrastructure, water, sewer, and roads, the traffic congestion, and the old boys' network, old ideas. Given we learned a good bit about the east and the west, we were curious, what is most distinct about the west and about the east, and what they share in common? And so you can see on the left, what is distinct about the west is it's congested, it's closer to Charlotte, it's wealthier, it's growing, it's overdeveloped. What's distinct about the east? It's farmland, it has scenic beauty, fewer resources, needs better infrastructure, and buildings are older. And they share in common? A lack of infrastructure, roadways, good people, low taxes, similar priorities, small town feel. This group, 500, telling us what's missing. Experiences and reasons to visit, green spaces and trails, countywide vision and cooperation, independent dining options, public transportation. So you can see a good number of those focused on things to do and experiences for people that both live there and could visit. Gave a list of attributes and wanted folks to rate this on one to 10. One is poor, 10 is excellent. And so you can see high delivery there, is a great place to raise a family, overall quality of life, schools, location, convenience, and very welcoming. The lower ratings as a fun place to visit, active arts and culture, public transportation. What aspect of Union County is most positive impression and most negative impression on visitors and newcomers? The positive, friendly, welcoming, natural beauty, small town feel, the great schools, affordable housing and lifestyle. The negatives, that congestion, that traffic, missing those experiences, the infrastructure, suburban sprawl. Asking this group about identity, they identified the most important thing to your identity is your proximity to Charlotte, your great school. So you can see that everything's kind of rated similarly. So lots of good things and good things to choose from, but similarly noted, and people could choose two answers. We were curious, given the information from qualitative input, what best reflects your opinion about growth in Union County? So you got 30% commenting, we need to slow a bit so we don't lose what makes us special, but then others saying we need the retail and restaurants, we need to spread the opportunity We also asked some brand character questions. We gave folks the option to answer these. We wanted to respect their time, so we had 415 that chose to give us this input. And so we gave them on a rating of one through five, left to right. You can see choosing between spontaneous, high-energy, and careful thinking. So closer to careful thinking, planning, closer to established than cutting edge, right there about the middle between upscale and accessible to all, and then more traditional than modern. We were curious, what vehicle best represents the personality? And over half said a pickup truck. Here are the others that they had to choose from, second being a minivan, not so much a motorcycle or an RV. Building our architectural style that best represents the personality? So this sort of input is helpful as we move through creative, suburban home over half, followed by farmstead. We also asked about brand personas, personalities, archetypes that fit that of Union County, and 39% saying helper. And you can see the breakdown from there. Helper, teacher, best friend at the top, not so much an entertainer. What's iconic? 72% said the courthouse, followed by... We asked about colors. People associate green, blue, and yellow, and brown. Now, let's take a look from the outside in, and this is 206 respondents. This was done in the greater Charlotte area, so we have an inner ring of folks in Mecklenburg County with a Charlotte address. And then we have the outer ring of nine counties surrounding Mecklenburg, including three in South Carolina, but also including some Mecklenburg addresses that are not Charlotte. So you start in that center ring, and then you have an outer ring. So we did, just to give you a little bit of background, we did not include anybody under 18. Otherwise, a bell curve there for age. We had 61% female. We also asked about familiarity. And so if, just like we terminated anybody under 18, or anybody that lived in Union County, or was outside those nine counties, we wanted to know how people, how familiar they are with Union County. And so, and they don't know that this survey is about Union County until about halfway through. I'll point that out as we go through it. So we had to go to almost 400 folks to get at those 206. So we had about 187 that said they were not at all familiar. So we did terminate them from the survey because we wanted folks to answer questions if they were somewhat familiar. Again, they don't know this is about Union County, so we asked the same question about all of these other, these six counties in front of you. And so not at all familiar in red, somewhat in yellow, and very familiar in blue. And again, the reason why that's not, there is no red for Union County is because this reflects the 206, which did not include any not at all familiar since we terminated them from the survey. So you can see that folks a little less familiar with Iredell, Lincoln County than the others. Again, they don't know that this is about Union County. We wanted some unaided responses. So without naming a town or city, what do you think of the following counties? So you see, for Union County, it's great schools, it's country, rural, it's wealthy, it's got affordable housing and lower taxes. And then the top of mind things for these others as well. We wanted to know, did this group think that these communities are improving in blue, staying the same in yellow, or declining in red? So you can see for Union County, they're almost equal with staying the same and improving. Gaston County with the largest number of folks, saying it's declining. Again, they don't know this is about Union County. Which county do you associate with agriculture and a rural setting? So Union County there after Lincoln. Manufacturing and industry, Union County there in the middle. Great schools, Union County at the top. Now, we do a lot of cross tabs, or share a couple with you. So here is by that inner ring, which is Charlotte, and then the outer ring of those counties around Mecklenburg, so about equal for Union County. You can see that the outer ring more likely to say Cabarrus. And there are folks from Cabarrus County taking this survey. There are not, there are no respondents from Union County. So there, you could interpret a little bit of bias. We'd have to dig a little bit deeper to verify that. Below taxes, Burke County, followed by Union County. Suburban sprawl, Barris at the top, followed by Union. Charming, small town. Do you see Union County there above, between Cabarrus and Union County? And so digging a little bit deeper there, we found that the Charlotte group more likely to say Iredell, and the outside ring more likely to say Lincoln. We were curious. People know where Kang Creek Park is, and so we've got almost a third saying that they do, or are getting it right. And now they're going to start learning that this is about Union County. So even though they weren't at the top of the list of counties associated with charming and small towns, that is their choice for best descriptors. They could choose two answers. So charming and small town, good schools, bedroom community, lower taxes at the top here, slower pace agriculture. Being a little bit deeper, East Charlotte market in green, the outer ring in orange. And so a big difference between choosing bedroom community. And so Charlotte seeing the slower pace, the lower taxes, the experiential thing in quality of life. No diversity more likely recognized by Charlotte. We want to know if folks had visited in the last three years? Two-thirds said yes. The third that said no, this is why they hadn't, they are unaware of things to do there. And so this gets to the point of that advocacy that we showed earlier, the importance of being sure that the folks in Union County are aware of the advantages, the attributes, the experiences, the things to do, so that they're able to tell folks they know, or the folks they host, what there is to do. Looking at the two-thirds, we wanted to know their primary purpose for coming to Union County. So you can see almost a third saying visiting family and friends, followed by passing through to go elsewhere, scenic drive and conducting business thereafter. And I'll back up here. I do know that as we dug deeper, Charlotte, Charlotte market was more likely to say scenic drive, or dining, or outdoor recreation, or shopping. So they are coming to Union County more than the outer ring for the experiences that you do offer. More of the outer ring is visiting family and friends and passing through. We wanted to know what the perception was before you visited. You can see those on the left, rural, open spaces, country, small town feel, conservative, not much to do. And did your perception change once you visited? So no change at 60%, positive change at 36%, a very small number, and a negative change. And these are the things that changed their perception. And as we dug a little bit deeper, we found that we were changing a few more folks in the Charlotte area, Charlotte proper than the outer ring. And we changed a few more positively by gender, a few more men than women. And as far as age group, the 34 to 54 generation X group. Asking a similar question from the community survey, the positive impression on visitors and newcomers and negative. So our positives, the scenic beauty, it's growing, it's more modern, shopping and dining, good schools, suburban amenities with rural charm. The negatives, it's too rural, it's traffic, vacant buildings, conservative politics. What surprised you? It's large, it's spread out, there's more businesses, more to do, the recent growth. Our all respondents, all 206, asked them the identity question. They said proximity to Charlotte and being a bedroom community to Charlotte, followed by charming and small towns. And digging a little bit deeper between the two markets, Charlotte versus the outer ring. So again, Charlotte choosing lower taxes and small towns, bedroom community and small towns for the outer ring. We talked to lots of folks from the outside looking in, surrounding counties and cities and towns and city managers and public information officers and economic development professionals in the region, but also at the states, some tourism conversations as well. And so all of those conversations condensed here. You're going to see some overlap. You know, there are probably several more economic development-focused items here, just given on the types of conversations that we had. But the assets identified for you from this outside or external group, lower taxes, advanced manufacturing, the airport, industrial parks highly praised by this group, but also the quality of life and the strong workforce, specifically mentioning the higher education institutions, but praising the lifestyles and the scenic countryside. Again, challenges, not what we're building a brand around, but it's good to understand what people know or what they hear. And so managing growth, so you see, not being on an interstate, having commuters out, being a bottleneck to the beach, the east-west divide being recognized from the outside, political strife or being parochial, whether that's at the county level or the municipalities. Missing anything distinct? We had a lot of folks tell us, when I would ask questions, they didn't know, or they couldn't tell us specific things about Union County. And so you can see what they... And so, you can see what they mentioned there, but opportunities being, being equal distance, or maybe not equal distance, but having easy access to an international airport, but also the Wilmington Port, again, the industrial parks and the, the airport there. Land use decisions, a, a good, good opportunity to, to manage the growth, HQs and offices. Now, we're at the neck of the hourglass, and we just have a, a little bit left, and we'll stay, stay on, on time, and then answer some, some questions. A sport to remember with strategy, we're at the neck of that hourglass. What is meaningful and relevant, distinct and ownable for Union County? The essence of strategy is sacrifice. This is an ad guy from a while back, but a very simple statement to keep in mind. So, our goal here, and the job of this brand is to tell your most competitive, compelling story. What we need from this strategy is to determine what that story should give off. I'm going to use some quotes from the research as we go through a few insights and get to that strategic positioning. And so, from our site visit, we have never told our story well. And so, that's something to, to keep in mind because we have to communicate with those ambassadors and let, give them the information to tell, tell our story so people hear it. You don't hear much from Union County, nothing distinct comes to mind. And we know from our visits and our conversations that there is plenty of distinction, big reasons to be there. You can say lots of great things, the agriculture, both the legacy of it and the technological advances as a strong sector for Union County, the education, the manufacturing, the, the sense of community and belonging people have, the safety they feel, the, the, the family, family focus that people appreciate. From the outside looking in, I had somebody tell us, the more I hear, the more attractive it is. So, it gets to the importance of telling that story. And so, it's, from site visit, we have so much opportunity, it's like watching a seed grow. And it's not seed as in just in agriculture, it's watching students grow and building good citizens and leaders and strong businesses and entrepreneurs and families. We did hear some concerns. Again, we're not going to build around a negative, but we can't do it in a vacuum. We need to work together, we need a vision, we lack our, we lack diversity. We have, we want to preserve our quality of life, but not lose our rural character. Again, we're after what is distinct. And so, not a surprise, Union County is unknown, but it's an unknown gem. So, we, we do agree. One gentleman from the northeast had been down there several years. He's, in six months, I had more friends than any, any time in, in my life. We don't want to be Charlotte, we want to be the best Charlotte has to offer. So, again, some great advantages, technology across sectors, the fact that any flight you're on has, has parts or, you know, has worked from Union County, great story with, with the schools. We don't jump out and grab you, but we're good or great at lots of things. We have lots of things, great things. And no other county in the, in the region has all that we have. We respect choices, the right to choose and how and where you live. And so, the neck of that hourglass, this is the foundation on which we will make recommendations for implementation. This you will use internally, this is not creative language, it would never fit underneath a logo, so it's not a tagline. This is meant to identify what is distinct and ownable for, for Union County. And so, we have a particular format, we have a target audience. Those are not the only people that you're going to communicate with, but it's the group of folks that you have the most appeal to. So, you'll communicate more easily and effectively with them, but it's not the only group that you'll talk to. The frame of reference, a geographic context, what makes Union special, Union County special is the point of difference and why that matters to the consumer. So, I'll share this with you and then give a little bit of rationale for it, as you've seen us go through the research, and then we can talk about the statement or answer any questions. Those who value deep roots and enjoy some elbow room, Union County, North Carolina, where the productive scenic Southern Piedmont greets the Charlotte metro, celebrates an independent spirit, cultivates knowledge and invigorates hard work. So, generations enjoy the lifestyle they prefer and take opportunities to new heights. So, the group that we're the most appealing to, Union County offers those lower costs for businesses and homeowners. Families are drawn to the good schools and the safety of, of the area. It has great outdoor opportunities amidst the scenic beauty. People want to put their businesses, the economic development story is strong, having the room to expand and the access to the talent. And as we know, agriculture very important to the history and the future. That frame of reference, top producing agricultural community, balances both urban, suburban and rural, has a lot to offer in those areas. It has easy access to, to opportunity and, and things with the major metro. People are drawn to the slower pace. And again, industry appreciates the access to not only the talent, but raw materials and consumers. The point of difference, we found your very independent minded, encouraging innovation throughout the community, whether that's with business and industry, or even governments and personal achievement. The strength in education from kindergarten to advanced degrees. And so, we learned particularly with, with agriculture, but throughout, that you, you have this emphasis on knowledge, but the practical application of, of that and, and developing that innovation. And we heard about the, the tech associated with, with agriculture as a, as a great strength that may surprise some, some folks. Lot of integrity and hard work and optimism coming from that agricultural tradition, but throughout your communities today. People want to be able to choose the type of life they want to lead or raise their family in. And you have the range of real estate that supports that. You are a fast-growing county with the opportunities to match that, that potential from the higher education that we talked about, building or cultivating great, great students and, and leaders, but also the need and the success in economic development. But we can pause here, I can answer questions about this statement, or we can go back through the research. We're very excited about how this can be treated creatively and put to work, and it can serve all of the Union County, County interests with, with specificity.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you today. Sorry, I forgot my mask. And we can't wait to put this to work on the new brand. Thank you.
Very much. Our next item on the agenda is item twenty-three, adoption of a resolution authorizing condemnation to acquire certain property or interest in property for temporary construction easement and permanent utility easement.
Mr. Long, would you like to address this item? Yadkin, number twenty-three.
Commissioners, this is just the continuation of the Yadkin project. We're down to two easements on, on the project. These are the last two that we have not proceeded on. And I'm not telling you we've acquired all of those, but they, they should be the last two that we are asking for condemnation on. Just haven't had responses for two of these people. It's the standard process. We will send them the notice of condemnation, see whether or not we can negotiate that within a thirty-day period. If we cannot negotiate it thereafter, we would proceed with condemnation.
Any questions for Mr. Long?
Motion to adopt a resolution authorizing condemnation to acquire certain property or interest in property for a temporary construction easement, permanent utility easement.
Any discussion? You ignore all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
Item twenty-four, SWO thirty-seven, West Fork, Twelve Mile Creek, interceptor improvements.
Mr. Matthews and Mr. Yee, if y'all would please address this to the board, please.
If you'll just give me one second, I guess we're me, leading the, am I leading the meeting? Is that okay, Michelle?
Here, here comes Chris.
Just pull that up, okay. Good, good afternoon, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. The first item is really, item twenty-four, it's West Fork Interceptor, Twelve Mile Creek Interceptor improvements. It's what you've seen before, and we're asking you to really approve three actions, which is authorizing staff to go ahead and complete the development of the bid package and the bid documents to go forth to the construction phase. Authorizing the county attorney to go ahead and complete the land acquisition and the easements necessary to do the project. And then, if necessary, for you to, for you to authorize the county attorney to go forward with a condemnation procedure to get those easements that are required to go forth with the project. If you need more details about the project in terms of length and where it's going to go and the benefits of the project, I have other slides that I'm happy to share, or I'm happy to answer any questions you have about this particular agenda item.
Mr. Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the time that you and, and the manager and staff gave me to go over this, these issues. And I, I guess I still have the, the issues with, we just heard a presentation where the top of everybody's mind is growth. We heard that over and over again, working together with the municipalities, working together with a common vision. And we're about to have a, a group come back, the twenty-fifty committees, with recommendations on what to do. Except for if we do these projects now, there will be no stopping the, a town. Any town can come up and say, well, the, the services are available, the infrastructure's there for sewer and water, and then they can put in what they want. We can't really have any say in it. Once the, once the stuff's in the ground, it's over with. So, so I guess I still am concerned about the, the urgency while we're waiting on so much important information to come back to us. Why are we spending money on information gathering if we don't intend to use the information that's gathered? And that, that's my concern with it still.
I didn't quite hear a question in that, so I'm not.
Question would be, do you have a, if we don't do this project, if we don't do this project, do we need the Poplin Road project that we're going to talk about next?
Well, I guess that makes sense to talk about it those ways. And what I've said before to you is, if you do not do the West Fork Interceptor, the benefit of doing the Poplin Road pump, Poplin Road EQ tank and the improvements that'll go along with it are, are minimal. And so, what my recommendation would be is if you're not going to do the West Fork Interceptor, to not do the EQ tank, because you, you won't get the benefit from it.
And if we don't do that tank, there's really no reasons to do some other projects. And if we don't build a sewer plant on that side of the county at the Lower Crooked Creek or expand sewer capacity, there may not even be a reason to build a line to that for water, other than maybe we could connect into some systems that we already have. So, so again, we're back to where we're making decisions on some very important stuff. Moving forward with some things now before we have all the information gathered. And is there an, what is the urgency that we have to do this today?
Well, so I would tell you that I think we've been working on this project to this point for about six years. We've, and I will tell you, for a number of years, that in the year and several months that I've been the Public Works Administrator, I've done this pretty much the same presentation three times before this board. And I know staff have done this presentation for you before I even got here. I would tell you that from managing the system, and there are all sorts of important questions about growth and about the county that, that all, the five of you have to address and the manager and his have to address. That's honestly that I, that's not my responsibility. My responsibility is, is building and maintaining a healthy water and sewer infrastructure. And I'm, I'm standing here telling you that this particular line is important to maintaining a healthy sewer system. The line on the east side, this, this line right here, where you say East Fork Interceptor, this green line, is carrying a lot of sewer, and I'm going to use this word intentionally, a lot of sewer traffic. It is congested, it is full.
May I ask you one question then? Who approved the capacity in that, in that line? What one entity in this county gave approval for those sewer taps to be connected to that line?
Well, if you're looking at just sewer taps, and it's the county that, I'm, it's Union County Public Works that approves sewer taps.
Does the Union County Board of Commissioners approve sewer taps?
For individual connections, no, sir.
Does the Town of Indian Trail approve sewer capacity taps?
The towns play a role in approving building permits and a bunch of other things, but as it relates to sewer taps, it is the Union County Public Works that approves sewer taps.
Stallings, Lake Park, Emmy Bridge. The only entity in this county that approves sewer connections is the Union County Public Works Department.
Yes, sir. And if a developer, if a community follows the water and sewer extension ordinance, you know, we, if they follow the rules, we approve the sewer taps.
We're over capacity in this project, we're over capacity in Grassy Ranch.
While Grassy Branch is a closed system, we don't allow sewer taps of any sort on that anymore other than.
But it's over capacity.
It is, it is at capacity, yes, sir. Grassy Branch is at capacity.
Are we fined for that?
It's at capacity, so what that means is when there are heavy rain events, there are, there are a significant number of sanitary sewer overflows, which has gotten the attention of the state and which we must address.
And I know that you haven't been there, and I, I, I promise you that I'm not saying it's any of this is your fault. I'm saying that a lot of these projects were approved before, prior to you even becoming to Union County. Do we need a better policy developed by the Board of Commissioners for Union County Public Works to limit or to start putting restrictions on when these things can be approved? A buffer, I guess, a better buffer.
Are you talking about sewer taps?
Sewer capacity, yes.
Well, I, I think there's a, I see Brian, Brian Matthews here. I was going to say Brian Adams, but he's, he's a Canadian, I don't think he's allowed in the country. There's a big, there, there's a much broader question, I think, involving sort of growth and development and what you want out of your, you know, county and your community. And that's a question for the board, for the manager and for the assistant managers, along with planning and everyone else. I got one little piece of it, and that's a sewer, sewer tap, water taps. And if a developer follows the water and sewer extension ordinance as written and drafted and approved by the Board of County Commissioners, you know, we've, those are the rules that we, Union County Public Works follows. Do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I just want to add it. So, when the board adopts a master plan for water and sewer, that is the roadmap that your Public Works Department uses to manage and to operate its system. So, obviously, that's an important document, and we update it periodically. And the board obviously can change, amend, add, anytime you wish to, for your strategy for that, that document. We're going through that process, but this is how they operate, is based on that master plan. We're going through that process, um, but this is how they operate, is based on that master plan.
And, and do you see, Brian, do you see a, uh, urgency to this? What, what is the main urgency to doing this today?
So if you ask my opinion, my opinion is that our urgency here is, and one of the things you saw that, uh, they presented to us about our community is, uh, the opportunity for economic development. And while we are very residential in nature, you have to have sewer if you really wanna have, um, some commercial industrial growth. And we are at capacity in the Poplin area, and that is an area which can serve the bypass, which is seen as one of our opportunities. So I would say, from my perspective, uh, that is a great opportunity that we don't want to miss by delaying taking some action. Now, obviously, there's a larger question to be answered in the future, and that is what do you do about capacity for a Lower Crooked Creek plant? Do you authorize it, do you not authorize it? That is a more long-term strategy. This is a short-term fix, it's not gonna last very long. We're already at capacity. It will only add a small amount of capacity. So that's why I say, from my perspective, that I believe it is, um, important that it board make a decision sooner rather than later.
I was a, a very big advocate of disposition that you're in, because we've never really had anybody that had the planning, um, the zoning, and, and the public works altogether. And, and you have a great opportunity here to address some of those things that we just saw in that branding...
Yes, sir.
...study that we're doing. And, you know, what I see is that, um, you know, we can't tell a municipality right now that they can't build a subdivision. We can't tell, um, a developer, no, if they want to build, and they have by right, or the zoning's already there. We can't tell them that they have to build commercial, they, they can't build residential. So, so our only tool in the toolbox really is scarcity of the resource and as far as managing growth. But do you, and this may be a more of a question for a legal issue later, you know, is there a way of, of reserving that capacity for commercial projects only?
Sure. So we've had a, a number of discussions with our, our legal staff and the county attorney. And it, our understanding of reserving capacity is that, um, you can do that in the sense of where you really have a very, very limited capacity. Now, they don't really specify what is that. Is that twenty-five percent of your total capacity, five percent? That's not really delineated. Obviously, at this particular juncture, Poplin is at capacity. So you really can't reserve anything, 'cause it's at capacity at this point. If the board were to choose to authorize the Poplin project to go forward, it gives you a limited amount of capacity. I, I suspect that if you wanted to discuss reserving a portion of that, we could certainly, uh, come up with what we think is defensible. But there is no number in the statutes that says it's X. So I think the board can certainly have a, a goal, but I don't think we can tell you it's a hundred thousand gallons or it's five hundred thousand gallons. It's really a matter of what do we define as being limited? And then what are we believe that we can defend if we have to defend that?
Do you believe that, 'cause you said, once we get this going, and we already have commitments in the pipeline...
We do, yes, sir.
Once we meet those commitments, uh, if this, if the board chose to approve this project and the, the Poplin, the, uh...
EQ tank.
Equalization tank?
Yes, sir.
Can, could, in your opinion, could we reserve the remaining, uh, capacity in that for, only for commercial projects?
I think the remaining capacity may be, um, a bit high, um, for you to consider to be limited, but that's just my opinion. I think we'd need to sit down, give you those numbers, and then decide, is that reasonable? I think the remaining capacity at this point, if everything moved forward, would be about three hundred thousand gallons. Um, I, I don't know if that's too high, too low, but I think that's the, that's the number we're working on right now, is approximately three hundred thousand gallons that would be left if everyone went through the system as planned.
After, after we meet our commitments?
After you meet, yes, sir, after the EQ tank.
We will have approximately three hundred thousand gallons of sewer capacity after we meet our commitment.
If everyone goes through that intends to go through. There will be some, obviously, that may say, I, I, I can't wait, 'cause the EQ, I wanna, I want the board to understand, this is not an instantaneous, um, event. So if you make an approval, it's gonna take eighteen months or longer to put the EQ tank in place and also for the West Fork to be built. So there's going to be a period of time at which we have no capacity to authorize, 'cause we, we just don't have it, and we'll be limited at that point.
When, when will we open the gates back up for people to come in and reserve that capacity?
So as far as reserving the capacity, and reserve is probably not the right word, what we'll do is we'll allow...
Apply for.
Yes, sir. We'll allow for individuals to go through the, um, actually, plan review process, get to the point where their plans are authorized or approved, but we will not issue a capacity authorization at that point. So it'll basically be ranked. Whoever went through that first is number one, number two. And as capacity's made available, number one will get that capacity, number two will get that capacity, if they still wish to go through. There are a number of times where people get their plans approved, and then something changes, and they go away, and they never actually get, uh, go through with the capacity. So it depends on, does everyone go through the pipeline?
So, and that would be prior to, that would be prior to the equalization tank even being opened?
Yes, sir.
Towns could approve subdivisions, uh, developers could go before municipalities and get all this capacity taken up quickly?
It is possible, yes, sir.
And by the time it's built, it's full?
That is certainly possible, yes, sir.
Mr. Helms.
Uh, first of all, I had the opportunity to sit down with Brian Hung the other day and went through in detail this process, and I really appreciate it, 'cause I found it very enlightening. Uh, one of the things you had in your presentation was, two thousand ten, we had a population of two, two hundred one thousand, basically. Today, we, we know we've got over two hundred and forty thousand, ten years later. Uh, I think we have an opportunity here to move forward and be prepared for our future, or we could do nothing and move backwards. I think that's a clear delineation that I'm hearing. Uh, what I don't want to do is put our citizens in hardship in the future, because we weren't for, forward-thinking enough to anticipate this. Uh, I understand that the West Fork and the Six, Six Fork, it's stressed. I think the word was used.
East Fork, yes, sir.
Yeah, East Fork's stressed, so we've got, the West Fork's gonna help that, and the EQ tank and things like that. I've got an opportunity to speak to one of the town councils tomorrow night. I, I'd hate to thought I'd have, if I had to tell them that you can't do anything else. If we do nothing, that's about what we're doing. So I, I'll support what you're, what you're asking for, 'cause you've been very transparent and clear, uh, and demonstrated to me the need for our citizens and the future of Union County. If you think that Union County's not gonna grow, or you look at all these permits we've got waiting, and some that wanna, wanna get in the list, uh, we're gonna grow. We've got a fabulous county here that people wanna be here with us. And so if we don't do something, we're gonna have to close the door. And that's just not an acceptable, uh, solution in my book. So, uh, I appreciate what y'all have done. I appreciate the open and transparency that you and the manager have done, and, uh, it's been very helpful.
Mr. Ray.
Well, Hung, I'm gonna sort of wrap this up. It, uh, this whole journey has been a, a, a teachable moment for me. And, uh, you know, two weeks ago, we got right up to the precipice, and then it went away, I guess. But within four or five days, everything was, as our manager said, the thoroughbreds were at the starting gate and ready to go. The one thing that gave me pause was, and I, I don't think it was nobody's fault, except until a month before this happened, uh, the West Fork connector was never really linked to the Poplin Pump Tank. Is that right?
But, Bob, I guess they were talked about as two, uh, two separate projects.
But to the point that if you don't do, uh, West Fork, you're wasting money on Poplin.
I guess that would be a fair statement, at least in the time I've been here.
And what I'm saying, I'm okay with it now, because we found a thing that the board wanted in the east water line or the south water line. So we came to common ground again, you know, it, uh, I just call it livestock trading, you know? And I know that's kinda crude, but, uh, I appreciate all y'all done. I think what's really happening in Union County is the board is asking more questions, and public works is being more transparent, and it's really adjusting to the new norm of board members asking questions and, and taking stands, and then when they get their answers, they show it's not a, a deal killer, it's a deal pause. And so, uh, with that, I would like to make a resolution to, uh, I mean, make a motion to approve the West Fork, Twelve Mile Creek Intercepter Improvement Project and authorize the completion of development of the bid documents. Authorize the county attorney to complete acquisition of property interest related to the project and adopt a resolution authorizing condemnation to acquire certain property or interest in property for temporary construction easement and permanent utility easement.
Here we have a mo, a motion, uh, further discussion. Commissioner Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna support this motion. I think that we've been working on this, uh, like you said, five or six years, the Twelve Mile Creek. Um, this has been planned, we have plenty of capacity in the Twelve Mile Creek...
We do.
...sewer plant. There's, there's capacity for commercial and residential in, in that plant, and this flows to that plant. There's no, uh, there's no really, how to put it, there's no, uh, anything can happen that's gonna change that, it's, it's got the capacity.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll be in favor of the motion. But we do need to understand as a board that this will open up high-density growth opportunities in western Union County, which, uh, will be out of our control and in our control. But it's, um, but it does open up a large number of opportunities for high-density, uh, high-density residential growth.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one more thing? Yes, sir.
I do agree with, the question needs to be asked of legal. Can we reserve commercial capacity? I mean, I, I agree with that. We need to find out what we can do, what we can't do, and then stick to it. And, and of course, if we come up on a situation, this board is very fluid. If we need to un, uncommit some of that from commercial, a vote will do it. You know, a three, two, a three for it. So, but let's find out what we can do, instead of talking about what we'd like to do legally.
Thank you. And, and, you know, more, this, this project, not as much, because, you know, it's just a pipeline going to the Twelve Mile Creek. The, the real key with commercial on that area in the north part of the county, and not, not only commercial, but school capacity, we have a school site there that if, um, with this new development, if we don't have capacity today for, for the high school and middle school site that we have in Emmy Bridge, uh, so we might, we need to make sure that we have that capacity. Not only that capacity, but as in Grassy Branch, where the school grew at Piedmont and Piedmont Middle, and that over, made us over capacity. We were at, right at the number, you know, a decade ago, and now we're over the number because the school grew. Um, so we need to be careful with that. But, but, yeah, this project has, uh, been in the plans, we've been talking about it for many years. If it, if it allows that, um, if it allows that plant continue to be used, which has capacity, I have no problem with it.
Anything further on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Item twenty-six, SWO forty, Poplin Road Pump Station Interim Improvements.
Well, sir, um, same, same sort of thing, you've seen this one before, and the request is to approve the Poplin Road Pump Station Interim Improvements Project and to authorize the county attorney to complete acquisition of the property interest for this project. Now, the property interests are actually pretty straightforward. It's, uh, just one piece of land and, um, a, a little bit for a pipe with, with an HOA. So I, I think those, that's pretty straightforward. If you recall, the, you know, that's the, the blue is the sewer basin, it's the Poplin Road Sewer Basin. The pump, EQ tank would go up there along with, uh, necessary piping. Uh, it would add about eight hundred thousand gallons of additional capacity in terms of us managing flows. Uh, it wouldn't add any treatment capacity, it would help us with wet weather, and, uh, again, it would help us manage, uh, the IBT, because all that flow does flow from, uh, the Atkin Basin down into the Kataba Basin. I, you were asking, some, some of the information you were asking for, I actually have it on this slide. And so this, I think you've seen before at the retreat, that the, the basin with the red dot that shows you where the current, uh, projects are that we've received within new development. Uh, and this, these numbers, you know, seven projects are in the preliminary stages. Uh, well, what new development has actually permitted is four hundred thousand gallons. There are roughly, uh, five hundred thousand in the pipeline, uh, for these seven projects. Uh, four are residential, three are mixed use. And it just shows you just sort of the, the challenge in that basin in terms of our ability to meet the, meet the needs. And so this po, uh, the pump station, I'm, I'm sorry, the EQ tank in Poplin Road will help us with that.
Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Poplin Road Pump Station Interim Improvements Project, the project, and authorize the county attorney to complete acquisition of property interest for this project.
Discussion.
Thank you. Commissioner Helms, would you entertain a friendly amendment to that to also add that, um, that the public work staff, um, not issue any residential additional beyond what capacity we already have committed to that until we can, as a board here, what we can legally do to reserve capacity? Uh, approximately twenty years ago, we had two hundred and fifty thousand gallons of commercial capacity reserved in that area for, um, for commercial-only projects. Magically, it went, just disappeared, and there was no capacity. And when the Sun Valley Theaters opened, or was going to open, they were turned down for sewer permits. And so that whole project there was built, ready to go, and the state shut us down on sewer. And we were supposed to have two hundred and fifty thousand gallons of commercial-only sewage capacity. So, so, and, and we, we've got a year, what, you, how long before we'll even have that built?
About eighteen, eighteen months.
Yes. So, and in those eighteen months, that we not issue any additional for municipalities or for county projects, uh, for residential construction beyond what we already have.
Can I, can I clarify what you're asking, so I understand? So the current process is that, um, we don't really issue, uh, permits, 'cause we're at capacity in Poplin. What we're intending on doing, and the board give us, uh, some direction, is to take plans, review those plans, and then put them in a queue based on who submitted first and who got the approval that their plans meet the requirements. So we're not really going through and saying, well, this is residential, this is commercial, this is just plans in general. So what I'd wanna understand, if the board makes this decision, are you asking for us to differentiate between commercial and residential? And therefore, if you are residential, you would be much lower on the totem pole, and commercial would move up, regardless of when you submitted your plans to be approved? I'd need to understand if that's what the board has.
I guess until, until any kind of further information comes back to the contrary, legal information reserved through... reserved three hundred, the additional, remaining three hundred thousand gallons of capacity for commercial and educational projects like the schools until we can get more information.
Okay.
From the, from staff, legal information.
Well, I'll tell you, from, from my standpoint, I, I do not concur because just what Commissioner Raab said. I'm, I want to hear what legal says, what we can do and what we can't do. If we approve this tonight, if we find out legally we can put those kind of restrictions on it, at a future meeting, we can do that. But I don't want to take action and then have it overturned because legal says you cannot authorize to do that. And so I would ask our attorney that, uh, if he will try to find out that out as soon as possible, but I, I ask that my motion stand.
If, if I may, uh, would we be able to have that back at the, uh, next meeting to, to brief the board on, um, the question that they've asked about reserving capacity?
I, I think we can do that.
Okay. So, uh, if it would be okay with the board, we'll bring that back, uh, as a presentation to the board specifically regarding reserving capacity at the Poplin Road Pump Station through the EQ Tank Project, uh, at the next meeting.
So am I, am I right to assume we can go ahead and pro- take care of this now? And if we decide to come back and put limitations, we're?
That would be my recommendation, sir.
Okay.
Well, I'm not going to be able to support the motion without some assurances that we have, uh, reserved capacity for those schools that are needing, that will need to be built when we have the additional residential and that we can prevent the municipalities from draining us of all that capacity before we know what's happening, which could happen very quickly. Those first come, first served policies could, that could happen within the next two months. Uh, it's, it's not a lot of capacity that you're going to have there left and that, after just the commitments we've already made. So I'm not, I'm not going to be able to support the motion as it is.
Mr. Raab.
I think we're all saying the same thing, Commissioner Rush. And Brian, going in that queue that you were talking about, I mean, what, what Commissioner Helms is wanting to do is vote on it today.
Yes, sir.
And I agree with him. And in two weeks, we're going to find out if we can reserve or not.
Yes, sir.
But there's nothing going to be issued in these two weeks, is there?
So in two weeks, there certainly could be some of the projects that submit and go through the review process and they get to the point where we say, you're approved, but there's no capacity. And then therefore, they would be ranked by the time that they got their approval. So it's, there could be projects that receive an approval but not capacity in this next two weeks. Now, are you going to eat up all eight hundred thousand gallons? I doubt that very seriously.
Three hundred thousand gallons.
Well, the five hundred thousand, I want to clarify, the five hundred thousand gallons is what if every project that is running through the process would go through. Those are not all approved. They're going through the process. There's three hundred thousand that is outside of that. So if every one of those projects today were to all get an approval and all say, I want to wait, they would eat up five hundred thousand gallons. We don't anticipate that that five hundred thousand gallons is going to be consumed in the next two weeks. So, but it obviously is up to the board. I, I mean, I, there will be some, in my opinion, that will get in on and they'll say, I want to be number one, I'll be number two. I just don't think you're going to consume all of that in the next two weeks.
Well, could we not limit it to five hundred thousand and that would save the three hundred thousand for the commercial, Commissioner Rush? We're, we're five and three, right?
Again, five thou- five hundred if everybody goes through.
Right.
And I think Hung's just going to show you what we're talking about. That preliminary not permitted is the number we're talking about right now.
So what I'm saying, what is the, the construction at Poplin and West Fork, what's it going to add? Eight hundred?
It's going to add eight hundred thousand total.
And what I'm hearing is if everything that's been approved came in in the next two weeks, it would only be five hundred.
That's, yes, sir.
The likelihood of that happening is.
Very, very slim.
That means everybody would be ready to pay their system development fees.
Yes, sir.
How many homes are, are we talking about on five hundred thousand gallons?
I, I don't have that number, sir.
There's a number. Is it three hundred sixty?
Seven hundred, uh, seventeen hundred fifty would be the number.
Homes?
I, I.
I spaced on three hundred gallons of that.
So if a subdivision came in with five hundred to a thousand homes, that would take up the additional three hundred thousand gallons capacity.
Well, understand, uh, they would have to go through the plan review process and be approved. We don't have any of those in the hopper at this point in time.
Does any of the municipalities have them in the hopper?
Uh, they still have to submit to us. Regardless if the municipality approves a rezoning, it still has to come to us for the plan review process. We don't have any that are at that point at this, at this time. So what you see, those projects that you show, that's what we actually have in the queue.
Mr. Raab?
All the questions.
Mr. Flynn, call. On fair with the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Texas, item twenty-six, Eastern Waterline Transmission Project.
Yes, sir. Uh, this, this one is asking you to authorize the county manager to go ahead and negotiate and execute a contract uh, with Brown and Caldwell, one of our on-call engineering companies, uh, pending legal review. And it would be for, uh, professional services to include design, modeling, uh, hydraulic modeling, um, of an interim solution, property acquisition, looking at easements, uh, with what we're calling the Eastern Waterline Transmission Project. Uh, and for this not to exceed a, um, an amount of two point five million dollars. And we've attached to that the capital project ordinance number two sixty-eight, which would be required to transfer funds from other places into this particular project so that we could do this work. And so what this work is, um, to give you some background, originally, when the Yadkin Regional Water Supply Project was conceived, it actually had two finished water lines coming out of it. One going, uh, to the east to Indian Trail as currently designed. And another one going south to, uh, seventy-four near, some, between Wingate and Marshville. As the project was being developed, that second water line was taken out of the project to reduce the cost. And somewhere, it falls somewhere between twenty-eight and thirty, I put it here, thirty-five million dollars uh, to do that particular, uh, design and, and the work associated with that water line. Uh, we took it out to reduce the cost of the project as the costs were escalating. Uh, and then we created it as a separate standalone project. Our plan was to go back and do it in the future. We had planned a twenty twenty-five design and construction starting in twenty twenty-seven with a, um, you know, water availability in sometime in twenty twenty-nine. Those are, you know, obviously loose figures. What we heard from the, um, from the board was, uh, we, we heard at last meeting from the chairman when he said, you know, as we were doing the master planning, he'd wanted us to look at this line sooner. So, um, we've done that. And to give you an idea of what that looks like, um, it's, it's obviously, it's, the Yadkin plan is this, uh, I guess I'll call it pink, uh, pink color dot. The current finished water line connects to, uh, the water, um, system here in Indian Trail. And this is the eight fifty-three water transmission project, which you've already approved. And so that's the tie-in right there. This is the new Eastern Waterline Transmission Project, which we, if you, uh, approve, uh, this agenda item today, we would get started on this basically today and we would move up uh, the design time from twenty twenty-five to, to now. So effectively, we're moving this project up in the project timeline, five years.
Hyung, would you please point out the other water interconnects along that western line?
Uh, so part of the feedback from the board, and I, I remember Commissioner Helm saying this, is that you wanted, uh, interconnects along the way so that water could be, uh, distributed throughout this northern part of the county. And so these five black dots, uh, are where the finished water main, uh, crosses over existing water infrastructure in Union County. So at these five locations, they have been designed so that's not a crossover like, like a flyover on a highway. They actually interconnect. So water will flow from the plant through the pipeline. And then once it hits the first interconnect, water will start flowing into those pipes. Goes into the second, water will start flowing into those pipes and through these interconnects will start spreading into this area. And so Yadkin Water will start feeding the Yadkin Basin. And right now, all this area is currently fed by, um, water from Anson County and also from, uh, the Catawba, Catawba Water Plant. And so we'll start, uh, changing out the Anson Water for Yadkin Water. And so there are, the five black dots represent those five, um, interconnects that we have currently designed. Uh, the other thing that I will tell you, as, you know, water infrastructure, water transmission mains continue to get built into the future to serve the needs of Union County residents. Uh, if it makes sense to ha- add other interconnects, uh, we'll do that. But right now, these are the only five that are designed in the plan.
Hyung, while we're in the design phase of the twenty-four inch line, uh, coming south, uh, to Highway seventy-four, that interim solution will be to connect at Old Camden Road at that first interconnect and then push Yadkin Water south through the existing infrastructure. Uh, but there's the, part of this motion, uh, allows for the hydraulic modeling to take place so that we know exactly how much volume we can push south through the existing structure. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. So, you know, on the ask, we are asking you to approve, uh, hydraulic modeling of an interim solution. So, and I, and I apologize for not having a more detailed map. The, the, part of the request is we have existing water infrastructure, water lines in the area. And so it's a sixteen-inch water line. And so, um, it, it's right there. It's not too far from the water plant. We, and it goes, goes south. We think, uh, that we can tie into it without too much difficulty. Uh, the question becomes, can we push enough water through a sixteen-inch pipe to serve the needs in this area? Because right now, the water coming from Anson flows through a twenty-four inch pipe. So we're losing effectively, uh, sixteen, twenty-four, eight inches of water. Uh, and so, uh, we just need to make sure that we can do the modeling to, to figure out what we can serve and how far we can push Yadkin Water in, in the existing water infrastructure while we construct, uh, this, uh, eastern line. So yes, sir, it is part of the project.
Thank you. Mr. Raab?
I'll make this quick. Uh, before the last meeting, I went upstairs before the meeting. The manager and Commissioner Rushin was talking about this. I told someone later, if you'd recorded it, what Commissioner Simpson said, it, it was word for word, although I know they hadn't talked about it. And so I'm just proud of y'all for, and the manager for making it happen this fast. And all it shows me is the next time we want something, we want it in two weeks. So I would like to make a motion to authorize the county manager to regulate and execute pending legal review, an agreement with Brown and Caldwell Incorporated for professional services to include design, hydraulic modeling of an interim solution, property acquisition, management and permitting associated with the Eastern Waterline Transmission Project in an amount not to exceed two and a half million dollars and adopt the attached CPO number two sixty-eight for funding this portion of the project. And I appreciate Commissioner Simpson and Rushin giving me a carrot that I was chasing. As Commissioner Akma said, what did you want? And I said, well, I didn't know till I got there and then I found out. So I've made the motion.
We have a motion discussion. For me, the intended purpose of the Yadkin Project was to provide water to the eastern and southern Union County, and this helps do it sooner rather than later, so. Mr. Chairman, I, I do have one question. So this, this project was originally slated to happen in, when?
Design in twenty twenty-five, uh, construction twenty twenty-seven, sort of, I guess I'll call it water line operational twenty twenty-nine.
Okay. And so it was always intended to happen and this would be on the eastern side of the county?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I just want the record to reflect that the Yadkin Project was always intended to serve the eastern side of Union County. Fair statement?
Fair statement. Thank you.
Mr. Rush?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We were told in November of, um, twenty nineteen that the pipe was going to be size sufficient to carry twenty-three million gallons per day from the plant, the twenty-three million gallon a day plant to Secret Shortcut and Rocky River Road. When I was told that, after being told again that it was for the eastern side of the county and that's the original intent, I wondered why we were sizing a line to carry twenty-three million gallons when the plant only was going to eventually produce that much. So I think this shores it up. This is what should have been planned from the beginning. Uh, makes more sense. We found out that Anson County Water, our contract will be up soon with Anson County Water. And if we're going to make water, then we need to use it for Union County residents. Our commitments that we have made to the Environmental Management Commission of adding, uh, sixty-seven thousand customers and we only have currently fifty-seven thousand, this maybe will help us meet some of those commitments as well. And I believe that, uh, I've been advocating since I came back on the board, not only for the plant to be located here, which it was going to be located in Indian Trail. That was the original plan that was presented to Commissioner Helm's eye in a two-on-one meeting, is that we were going to build the plant in Indian Trail to clean the water. So this has been a long process and I feel like this does shore up. Thank you, Commissioner Simpson, or Chairman Simpson, um, for talking about it as well. And thank you, Commissioner Raab, for, um, hearing the two and listening to the two of us and what we had to say at different times. And I think this does ensure that some of that water will be used, um, in eastern Union County. And I appreciate, um, the staff for looking into this and I will be supporting the motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I might point out one thing on the map, uh, you'll see the green dotted line. That's, that is the boundary line between the Catawba Basin and the Yadkin Basin. And you can clearly see all the major water lines that exist currently today in the Yadkin Basin and the opportunity to use Yadkin Water in the Yadkin Basin. These are not all the water lines because some of them are smaller and they won't show up on this map, but, um, there is, uh, quite a few water lines that, that are awaiting Yadkin Water, uh, across this county. Thank you. Anything further? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Texas two, county manager comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, let the, uh, the board and the public know that tomorrow, September the twenty-second, uh, we will have a, an event that, uh, we are calling Here to Serve Day. Uh, Here to Serve has been, uh, a theme that you have seen not only on our, our face coverings, uh, but also on our websites uh, as we have worked through, uh, many of the challenges that this organization operationally has experienced uh, related to COVID nineteen. And that has been a theme for us, uh, during these, uh, past months. Uh, we are here to serve. Um, this, uh, Here to Serve Day will take place at the Union County Farmer's Market uh, tomorrow, uh, beginning, uh, at twelve noon, from twelve to three. Uh, it is going to be open for employees. Uh, and we have a number of activities and things for them along with the, uh, opportunity to give input into um, the, uh, branding, the creative phase of the branding project. Uh, at two PM, the twenty fifty committee will be meeting, uh, outdoors under the, uh, the shelter there at the farmer's market. Uh, it'll be a public meeting to select the scenarios uh, for a recommendation to the board regarding, uh, twenty, the twenty fifty project. Um, uh, the, the Here to Serve Day will be open to the general public, uh, of course, for that meeting. And specifically from three to six PM, um, we have all of our, what I call forward-facing public departments will be on-site with information about the, uh, services that each of them provide uh, along with opportunities to do things like register to vote. Uh, there'll be, uh, opportunities, uh, to fill out information regarding passports. Uh, Union County Sheriff's Office will have, uh, uh, will be present and will be talking to folks about, I'm sure, uh, uh, many things, uh, including permits, um, along with, uh, public work signing up for e-bills, et cetera. Um, the management staff will be on hand over there to have conversations with anybody from the general public that wishes to stop by and, and chat with us. But we look forward to a good time, uh, interacting with the public and encourage folks to participate. And, uh, Here to Serve Day, come by the Union County Farmers Market tomorrow. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hems.
Yes, first of all, I want to congratulate Lynn on her thirtieth anniversary. When I, uh, took this position almost eight years ago, I had past commissioners tell me, the greatest asset you have as a county commissioner is Lynn West. And I tell you, you have proven that over the years. Uh, she is an asset to help us do our job, to make sure we're well-informed. And I can't thank you enough for all that you've done in helping me and this entire board. Also, I'd like to say that, uh, I enjoyed the branding. I think, uh, they, they, uh, they got very close to Union County. And, uh, I appreciate, I'd like to, I look forward to talking some more about it, but, uh, it was very impressive. So, with that.
Commissioner Raab.
Thank you, Lynn, for helping to keep me on the scale.
Mr. Russian.
Thank you. And I, I'll echo what Commissioner Hems said. I, I got to meet you about twenty years ago, and, uh, you've been, you've been the same, uh, I would say probably, I'm, knowing your character, you've been the same for thirty years. And, uh, you have been a valuable asset to this board, passports. Uh, I can't, I can never recall even commissioners I've agreed or disagreed with ever having a harsh word to say about Lynn West. So, thank you so much for what you do. And thank Rick for, uh, allowing you to come be with us all, all the time. Thank you.
Commissioner Aikma.
I'll just echo the same. So, with that, wish everyone a good evening.
Thank you, Lynn, for your service. And I will move that the board go into closed session for the following purposes. In accordance with General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A four, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives, and in accordance with General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A three, to consult with an attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege. Y'all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, can we take a five minute between? Certainly.